The United States, America, in two thirty-five years we're to stand one nation under God, and individual liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Green, here. Mr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Seidler?
Here.
Mr. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Hippo?
Here.
Mr. Hoover?
Here.
Mrs. Erwin Adams, here. Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Cruz?
Here.
We had an executive session for the purpose of personnel, and also I just wanted to remind everyone to make sure these microphones that are easy on your hand. So we'll move on to hearing from citizens. Citizens who would like to address the board have five minutes to speak. You need to state your full name, your address, you need to be at our main school district, and feel free to step up. And then we have our library folks here. They look anxious.
Good evening, Jennifer Nysley. I'm here representing the Alton area Public Library. First, I want to thank Mr. Pepper again. We had an incident with a parent and child in our children's room this past month, and the officers that responded were extremely professional and discreet, and really helped us resolve that situation. So we always appreciate that we can call on them. September is National Library Cards Sign Up Month. I left some information at your desks, and I encourage you all, if you don't already have a library card, to join many thousands of people in Alton who already have a library card. We had a group of high school students come over last week to get library cards, so we were encouraged by that, and we always welcome classes to come over and do some regular get their cards. And if there's any questions about any of the packet, there's some programs for preschool children, some programs for school age children. If anybody has any questions about those, I'd be happy to answer them. And as a member of our library, please let me know. I can take you through and show some of the full stuff that I have to do.
Just real quick, how's everything going with your roommates over there?
Good.
The library, if you're like chair or building now, so.
Yeah, we actually, our door count for August of 2018 was about eight thousand five hundred people through the door, and August of 2019 is about eleven thousand five hundred. So we saw a significant uptick career length served to almost seven hundred people. So I can speculate that maybe families are coming in, and one person being served, and then families are coming in to use the rest of the services of the building. It's becoming sort of a one-stop shop for people to get their services, get a library card, and help the children's program. So it's doing really well.
Wonderful, thanks. Is that Kelly?
Kelly Woods, Troy Center Two, May Blavia. I had a couple of questions, actually, Carl, maybe you can answer one of them. I've been doing a little bit of asking around, and because school board members are elected officials, if they have a political page, I was told that they're not really supposed to be blocking and banning people from commenting on it whenever they're bringing up subjects to discuss. And do you know anything about that? Like, if that's any rules with anything about that?
I couldn't answer that off the top of my head. I don't know that.
Can you find out?
Or ask me to find that out, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, can like someone find that out? Because I was told that if it's a political page, that it's supposed to be public, because we vote, we vote, so we have, we should have a say. The other thing is too, like, over the past few years, there's been a lot of stuff in the district about bullying. Why is it that there are board members bullying each other? Like, and attacking administrators and such, and it doesn't have anything to do with me liking this person or that person? It has to do with the fact of grow up, stop attacking each other. Our students and other parents are seeing this, and like, I'm gonna just say it, Ed Cruz, like, it's ridiculous what you're doing. Like, calling it like...
I dispose the truth. People comment. I can't control what they comment.
Preyatell's Palace is the truth. Dr. Preyatell wasn't the one that came up with that design, and it was in the works before he came here to work. So check your facts. The fact that people are attacking each other constantly, and I don't care who it is, you guys probably should be setting a better example for our students than, because, like, following your lead, how are you gonna tell them not to bully if you guys are bullying each other? And it doesn't just go for Ed. It goes for quite a few, yeah. You know, and yeah, look at me, I know, I was putting mustaches on your face. I'm sorry, that was just carrying on. But, you know, I just think that people shouldn't be bullying each other. That they should be having their little spats behind closed doors where we're not all seeing it, and where students aren't seeing it, because students get on his pages also, and they see how you guys are interacting, and we should be setting examples for these kids, not showing them how to bully.
Thanks. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to special presentations. We have our first presentation from the Pennsylvania School Board Association. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it.
Ashley, yep? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Erin Eckert, and I'm the new field representative of the New School Board Association. I'd like to first thank you for including us on your agenda, and for your continued membership as a part of PSBA. In the chest that I'm in front of you, I have some different information regarding some of the different services that we provide, as well as some upcoming events PSBA is hosting for 2019, 2020. This includes our annual school, our school leadership conference, which runs from October sixteenth to eighteenth in Hershey, and some information about required school director training, which PSBA is an approved provider of. PSBA is offering both online and live training options, both of which are complimentary, with newly elected school directors needing five hours of training, and any reelected school directors needing three hours of training. If you have any questions, my contact information is in the kit. You're always free to send me an email, phone call, whatever works best for you. I'm here tonight to recognize David Francis, Ron Johnson, and Sharon Green for new years of service and dedication to the Alton security school district. The legacy of school board service is firmly embedded in the history of our nation and its commitment to public education. The Pennsylvania School Boards Association, founded in eighteen ninety-five, has a rich history as the first school boards association established in the United States. The consummate board member is described as an ethical, principled individual with a deep desire to serve. School directors have strong belief in the value of public schools and local control of public education for the benefit of all students. Today, school directors are expected to offer more services along with world-class instruction with limited resources. These expectations provide a tremendous challenge for school directors who are unpaid volunteers, who work tirelessly, giving up their free time away from their families to contribute to schools and the communities they serve. PSBA has been recognizing the contributions of dedicated local school directors with long-term service since nineteen eighty-three. The honor holds the association's way of saying thank you to those individuals who have simplified leadership by giving unselfishly of their time and talents for the benefit of public schools serving students across this great Commonwealth. It gives me immense pleasure to recognize you for your years of service and for being a part of this rich legacy. So thank you to David Francis for twenty-four years of service, Ron Johnson for eight years of service, and Sharon Green for eight years of service. And I have a certificate and a plaque for them.
You might have to go out of the hall. What was that term, leadership? Thank you, Dave, for staying.
So here's a nice clock, and it actually includes some of the math things, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Go right out of the hall, you can get them though. I'll make it as fast as I can.
Okay, thank you for coming. We really appreciate it. And then you're the person instead of Karen, so we will, and so, thanks for being here.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Crowley. I'm a senior director of education and training at PSBA, and I was asked by the board to come and do a presentation. I recognize that this may seem odd to come and do a presentation on roles and responsibilities after recognizing a former for twenty-four years of service. However, I would like to just let you know that as I've done this across the state, it isn't that odd or request. We often find that boards benefit from hearing the major roles and responsibilities. It opens up some conversations about how they like to proceed, find common ground, and sometimes talk about priorities in their discussions. So I recognize that the name of introduction to roles and responsibilities may sound preliminary, and it may be for many board members. However, it can prompt discussion. So I'm gonna do a brief presentation here, and then next week we'll come back and allow for you to discuss. If you have any questions, I ask you to hold them during this presentation until next week, and then we can discuss them at that time. Okay, thank you. So all of our programming at PSBA is founded upon the principles for governance and leadership. In your kit, you have these principles on a card, and I'll let you know how they were created. They were actually created by a committee consisting of veterans, school directors, superintendents, and school solicitors. So this was a group effort to come up with a guiding principles. The developers drew from best practices and vast experience to create a blueprint for school directors across the state, and you are currently have these principles adopted, so they should be acting as a guide for your school board service. They're broken into these seven areas, and you will also, in your packet, find a list of our online learning. That's also organized by these principles. So this is really the foundation of everything that we do, and it was informed by school directors themselves, school solicitors, and superintendents. So I'm gonna briefly talk about board responsibilities, mainly coming from the P.A. Total School Code of nineteen forty-nine, which is the primary law outlining the powers and uses of school boards. So again, this would often be a place where people are familiar with the responsibilities delegated. But it also outlines how nuanced and vast the role of the school director is. This is not a simple role, and it does take quite a bit of time to experience all the layers and levels of this role as you encounter through different cycles. Adopt courses of study and consultation with the superintendent, approve the school calendar, adopt textbooks, appoint a superintendent as a chief school administrator, and evaluate camera annually. Approve the hiring of necessary teachers and other employees upon recognition. Engage in good-bait collective bargaining with units of unionized employees. I want to point out just the verbs here, because this is part of, when we talk about roles and responsibilities, a lot of the discussion is around, what is the role of a school director? What is the role of the school board as a collective? And then how is that different or similar to and overlapping with the role of district administration, the role of the superintendent as the tenth non-voting member? That's where a lot of this discussion happens, and it's very understandable, because the same P.A. School Code also is outlining the roles and responsibilities of administration and superintendent. And so where does that line go? Well, oftentimes, the verbs can point to that. So the school directors and school board aren't creating the school calendar. They're not enrolling with them. They're approving it. And in that way, they get to be the community's voice. They get to check on process. They get to ask questions about the process and how that was developed before they approve it. That's just one example. So the rest of the responsibilities we have outlined here. This one, of course, everyone's very familiar with. It's one of the largest tasks of a board, adopting annual budget, and of course, you must do it on time by state law. Levy taxes and appoint tax collectors if necessary. Provide for the necessary school facilities. Again, facilities planning and facilities committee, these types of things are, tend to consume a lot of time depending on the cycle of the school year, and school board members are often very involved in those. Adopt and enforce reasonable rules and regulations regarding school activities, publications, and organizations, and ensure that specialized instruction and accommodations are provided for children with cognitive or physical disabilities. So that would be your special ed programs, following IEPs, and ensuring they're in compliance with all the federal and state guidance around that. So we come to just a few actions that are prohibited. And again, hopefully, this is very familiar to the board, but also might be something that those in the community may not know about. So authorize the construction of schools without approval. School boards are local governments and have local control, but there's a lot of guidelines and requirements they must follow by the state government, and this would be one of them. There needs to be approval by Department of Education. You can't delay for that. Request or accept gift in return for favors. This refers to the Ethics Act. Public officials and public employees, speaking of employees, public officials and publicly elected officials, Ethics Act applies to that. So it's just this idea that there cannot be good pro quo. This doesn't mean that, of course, the students come in and offer the board goods that they bait as a thank you for service. That's not what we're talking about. We're obviously talking about a gift. That could be interpreted as influencing the board decision. Require religious or political tests. Hire near relatives of board members. This comes from the school code as a teacher. So what that means is accept by a majority vote of the board excluding the related board member. And finally, engage in illegal discrimination. Now, this just is referencing this idea that the board is employees and goes through processes of hiring, and so this often just references protective classes and making sure that you're following procedures and making sure you're not asking questions that will then involve the board in litigation that you're asking for references. Okay, so that is a quick overview of some of the main roles and responsibilities. But what we like to think about is the major tasks. We like to think about this as a governance loop. So part of having a successful board begins with an understanding of what the role of governing the board is and is not. This, again, is probably where a lot of your conversation happens with boards when I go about training. This is exactly where a lot of our conversation happens in training. So a great way to understand this is to think about the governing, and we have just a graphic here. So planning, legislating, policymaking, empowering, and evaluating. This is a constant loop and cycle that the board is engaged in. And so we talked about planning earlier. That would be the comprehensive or strategic planning process, studying enrollment projections for facilities and budget planning. These are all things that the board tends to be engaged in, because they're responsible for passing the budget. They are responsible for maintaining facilities, and so they have to study the data that informs those decisions. So planning is a cycle that ebbs and flows depending on what cycle you're in, comprehensive planning, depending on whether you're approaching a large capital project. Legislating. This is often viewed as the most important function of the board, because this is where the board gets to govern through policy, setting policy. Policy is the broad local law that sets guidance in place for then the administration to go and figure out the how of implementation. Empowering is the third. So board meeting a couple times a month, and even with standing committees, obviously can't do the work that involves day-to-day running a massive operation like School District, which feeds and transports and educates a number of students and does that all safely. So, of course, the board needs to empower by hiring and recruiting a team of highly effective educators, administrators, and supportive staff, but also empowering them with their ability to do their role as directed by the board administration. And finally, boards are also in a constant cycle of evaluating depending on which area we're talking about. So they need to be continuously engaged in evaluating the academic and operational performance of the district through some of the metrics you talked about: student data, achievement data, facilities planning and where is that, comprehensive goals, and where you're measuring against those. Evaluating results drives further planning, which turns into a policy, and that's where we come back to the governing loop. This also helps to point out the role of the board as a governing agent, sort of focusing on the big picture, focusing on the future, and making sure that the district is headed there in a fiscally responsible way, in a way that's in compliance with all the state and federal mandates, in a way that is elevating the student's performance in the district. So the board should be focused on that, while also, of course, being responsive to the present, the public comment, and the issue and concern of the community. So that's a tension in a very limited amount of time, which brings me back to this idea that board service is anything but simple. It is nuanced. It is complex, and everyone who's doing it is doing it as one-hundred percent a volunteer. So when we recognize school directors, we do so fully understanding how much of their time is invested in this and the difficulty of the position. So board authority. We like this code. It comes from our essentials of school board service. School governance is founded on the belief that a group of very different people can make better decisions than any one person alone could. Diversity is the board's strength. It is obvious from the first few minutes of this meeting that you do have diverse opinions on this board. You have perhaps diverse representation of different aspects of your community, and so diversity, you can think about it on a lot of different levels. But we believe, as we stated, that that diversity can be a board's strength, as long as they're able to harness it and respect each other's differences of opinion, and differences in life experience, and differences in professional experience, and how that informs the board as a whole. The law conveys authority to the board through the board acting as a governing body making collective decisions. So the board must, and all of you are practicing this currently, under the Sunshine Act, a public meeting of the school board is the only place where the board may exercise its collective authority as voting on matters and making decisions. However, of course, there are those exceptions for personality issues. They can do that in executive session. Labor relations when you're discussing negotiation strategies. Litigation, potential or current. Real estate, if you're discussing the purchase or lease of a property. The decision to do so then would be done in the public. The discussion of that could happen in private. Confidential information, discussing privileged information, for instance, during a student discipline, incident, or an employee termination incident. And school safety and security, which is one that's been recently added. So, of course, discussing matters that would impair effectiveness of plans and measures if it was disclosed publicly. These are the ways in which the board can operate in the executive session, making sure to protect the information and follow some of the guidelines around protecting information. So when we talk about collective authority, the other thing that happens is we talk about the difference between an individual school director, those we honor tonight, we're honored as individuals serving multiple terms, and we'll talk about the board operating as a collective body. So a couple of things that individuals should not do because it's acting outside of that collective body that we talked about. So individual school directors should really operate with the board, and so if they need information, they should go through the superintendent, or if the superintendent has a designated, for instance, on a committee, and that relationship has been established, then, of course, the director can interface in that way through a committee kind of structure. But a school director really should go through the superintendent to access and discuss things and stuff. School directors are like anyone else when they leave the boardroom. So you have a visitors' policy, and school directors, like any other person in the public, must follow that visitors' policy. There's no special privileges or exceptions granted to school directors. So just like anyone else in the public, you can't drop into a class to observe a class unannounced. You would follow the same policy. Sometimes boards will put in a little bit of an extra thing in, call it a board operating guideline, and sometimes that requires school directors to give an extra step. But if that's not there, school directors can then walk out of the boardroom like everyone else. As individuals, individual board shouldn't seek access to personnel files, but the board collectively could request access if it pertained to a board deliberation. So instead of thinking about these as a do not, really, we like to say what you should be doing is establishing protocols that everyone understands how to access the information the board feels it needs, how to access staff if they feel they need information from those staff members, and access buildings if they feel that they need access to the buildings. So it's really just about having a common understanding that everyone understands, putting it into a protocol, and that everybody can follow it. Two more. Individual school directors should not investigate members of misconduct, and the reason why is because the board serves a very specific role in any type of misconduct that might happen. If the board reports it to the administration, then either administration or council would conduct an investigation based on their own protocols, and the board may be asked to then weigh in on the findings of that investigation. And therefore, the board needs to play a crucial role in that. They can't be involved both in the investigation and in the findings. And so that's where it's not a do not because you shouldn't be involved. It's a do not because you are involved at a governance level. And so that's why we recommend that, so that everyone plays their roles and the system is fair. And individual directors shouldn't make promises on behalf of the board or speak for the board if they're not the designated spokesperson. And again, we recommend that the board does designate a spokesperson. Oftentimes, that would be the board president or the superintendent. Other times, it's other people. That's the board's decision entirely, but they should designate someone, and individuals shouldn't pretend to be that person if they aren't. They need to represent their own opinion versus the board if they're not the board spokesperson. So all of this is there to be enforced. So there's tremendous power to influence and represent the community as a collective, but individually, you bring ideas and experience and perspective to the board as it deliberates. You have a vote on the board, but individual school directors by themselves cannot make decisions on their own. That affects the entirety of the district. So I'm gonna close with just this idea of the team of ten, which we emphasize a lot in our trainings. Your work as a school board member or superintendent is based on human relations, working as a team of clear role toward a common goal. And this is where I will return to this idea. This is a very great presentation that I'm wrapping up soon. We offer this usually as a training for the board to engage in for three hours or so. We go through scenarios, and we talk through Q and A. That's also offered to your board as part of our services. And the reason we do that is because it helps get into the nuances of some of these roles, and really understanding how the board can work collectively to both represent the community and make effective governance decisions, because it's not easy, and it's not always simple. Okay, so a lot of the roles and responsibilities can be broken down into this paradigm. The school board is focused on the what, and the administration is focused on the how. And together, they're able to make the district run on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year basis. The board actualizes their what through policy, and the administration actualizes their how through administrative regulations, sometimes called administrative procedures. And those should be obviously aligned together and worked together. The foundation of this relationship between district administration and the school board needs to be trust, communication, and respect. And as I said before, that sounds simple and is, in fact, complicated as we work with each other at some of these meetings, but that should be the goal. Thank you for having me tonight. Next steps for you all are going to be next week. A colleague of mine who's on my team will come back, facilitate any questions you had about what was said here tonight, perhaps offer any more detailed and nuanced information if you need it. And then beyond that, you could, of course, bring us back to do a full workshop. This is a presentation, more limited in time, and lacks a little bit of depth. So that's an option for you if you think that that would be helpful. And of course, in addition to the information that you provided in your packet, there is a number of things that we would highlight that directly correlate to this presentation, which would be, of course, on the comprehensive plan. We have an online course on policy and administrative regulations. Of course, on evaluating your superintendent. You can find those. They're less than a half an hour, and they're available to follow you with your membership. Thank you for having me. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. All right, we'll go on to board reports, starting with superintendent's report.
Just wanted to touch base on opening a school. Kudos to the teachers and the administrators, all the support staff, police, et cetera, for making a very successful start to the school. Studying, really hats off to them, because they had a yobbish job to get the high school ready to go. Did excellent work there for the teachers who helped us pull this whole thing together. Thank you. Wanted to give one little shout-out to the middle school, junior high party. Junior high saw an increase of seven percentage points, not seven percent, but seven percentage points in math, in seventh grade, six percentage points in eighth grade. Those are significant. Those are somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty percent improvement in proficient advancement in mathematics. They also saw a five percent across the board, seventh and eighth grade reading, which is extremely solid, solid growth for a year. A lot of this has to do with the restructuring. A lot of it has to do, quite frankly, with the boots on the ground of the teachers doing excellent work and administrative team making it happen. But then with other changes we made with interventions and different kinds of supports we provided to the students in the middle school, hopefully, we started to crack that, and getting the middle school chief to continue to grow. So I'm gonna say hats off to the junior high and to all of our faculty and administrators. Great, it's a great start to school.
I just realized, can somebody get?
No.
No. You don't have a more time.
I understand. But you want to let them know that the presentation that they looked at. And please, Susan, can you make a note of which board members weren't here for liability purposes for the district? That way we know these ones actually saw it.
This is a model show, I don't know how to ask a question, but just statistically. How do we find out how many boards there are? I was trying to find like rankings, like where we rank both in terms of dollars and budget and number of students. Is that accessible to me?
Your budget is available on P P, website, what's for your students, those are P D materials, they should be easily accessible.
I would, I would, of course. There's data we can grab using, what's that, focus?
Forecast five.
Forecast five. We can grab some old pieces and get that to the board.
I kind of remember the number that went up to seventeen four.
Through the eighteen four, the school is up in the state at this point. And our cost per student, for schools our size with our demographics, we are on top as far as our student achievement. We do a lot of comparisons to just school districts in general. And we always are going to have work to do to improve it, but we're doing an excellent job of student achievement for schools of our size and our demographic. We can dig up and get you that data and information. Susan, did you catch that?
I did, I already did.
Okay.
It shouldn't be that difficult with forecast five. You have trouble with that.
It's literally.
All right, I'm going with the board president's report. I really don't have much to report except that I'll just comment, because I don't have the materials here on that. A comment that I actually attended the opening and it was nice to actually see people having some fun. The administrative crew and some of the other folks put on their little skits with all the teachers and the staffers that were there to try to at least bring a little bit of joy to what is normally a kind of numbers and instructional type of thing. So kudos to you guys for putting on the presentation we did. It was active future themed, which was pretty cool as well. All right, we'll move on to athletic council, Mr. Riggio.
Fall sports season's underway. Both the high schools, junior high, I think seem to be off to a great start. Tonight also, we have our girls soccer team is currently playing at Hagerleesburg. They are currently undefeated, our girls, and going to go to more wins more night.
Phil, real quick, do we have attendance for Friday's night's game?
I can have it with me, I can get that for you in the morning.
But speaking of that, was that for the football game, the same thing you're talking about? Was that larger than usual? Because it seemed like the stands were filled a whole lot more on our side.
We had a great, great crowd on our side. I think we had a great weather night. And I think the community was anxious to kick off the season. So yeah, it was a great crowd for us on Friday.
Pretty enjoyable. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Riggio?
I was only hoping you might have an update on that score in Hagerleesburg.
I don't yet, but I have, I want to wrap that when I get it.
All right, that's a blur, right?
Meeting is, I mean, not this, next year.
Education.
Education.
We're having our first education meeting of the year next Thursday, September nineteenth at five o'clock, according to the facilities meeting. So I think we'll meet right here in the boardroom if anyone would like to attend. So just a couple of highlights. Elementary schools, the children are being assessed on their math and measures to determine appropriate placement for their math and reading groups. Physical education teachers are starting the wellness walk and will finish tracking their steps at the beginning of October. The September steps will mark, will support the Alex Million Mile Walk Against Childhood Cancer, which is done in collaboration with the Brian Morton Foundation. Secondary students are working through the Rachel's Challenge Protocol. And I think there was just an assembly in both the junior high and high school for Rachel's Challenge. And secondary has implemented the success program. And elementary has implemented the be there program to help increase attendance. So we hope to see you next week.
Thank you. Facilities, Mr. Seigler.
We haven't had a facility meeting since the last meeting. I believe we have one coming up on the twelfth, I think.
It's next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
On the twelfth, one after.
Yeah.
Nineteen, that's right before the education, or I mean, right after the education.
All right, that'll be our next.
All right, thank you. Hi, U A.
Why did you miss finance?
Didn't miss finance, finance, Mr. Gray.
At our meeting, we went over the bills list and any board member that had any questions could ask questions at that time, which will save us time in this meeting. We discussed the two million dollar payment that we had to make because the contractor had purchased materials in advance and how to pay for that. And we had several different proposals and we chose the less costly one.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Hi, U A.
Hi, U A. Unfortunately, last month's meeting, we had a Cal meeting that night, so I had to miss it. They have another one coming up the end of this month. I'll report on that at the next meeting. On to outreach.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go with it. What I'm in the process of doing, I talked with Mr. Hatch briefly. We're going to have a meeting with the students. We're going to let them settle in a little bit, so we'll meet with them in October, if that's all right with you, Dave.
That's fine.
Okay, and then, once again, I'll bounce this off you in the open forum, Dave. I was thinking about meeting with the teachers in November, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
All right, I'll set it up and give you the time. Also, outreach has been talking with both parents, students, and teachers. And the one thing I can report is our educational staff is number one, professional, number two, dedicated. And the amount of time that the teachers that I talked to and met with that have spent time outside decorating, getting their rooms ready for the year, the amount of money they've had to spend themselves on the education of the students in this area is, in my opinion, outrageous, but it's also commendable. And anyone who ever tells me that teachers are overpaid for what they do and don't do the job well is going to have a fight with me because I see nothing but extreme, extreme care. And the only thing these teachers are worried about is educating the students of the area. And I'm looking forward to meeting with them in November, and that's all.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Dan, Mr. Johnston.
Yes, all board members in front of you, is a election of candidates, vote for one. Any category or as many as you wish, and turn it into.
One of us.
Okay. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Policy.
Policy, we had a meeting on September third. It was well attended and that's all I have to say.
All right, public library, I'll of course defer to Mrs. Nicely who was here earlier. But I will say that the library is a more comforting place right now. They have their locker parrots, which are a way to entertain you if you see them jumping around in the mornings. And it's also nice to see, if you go over there after school, you see a whole lot of kids just hanging out in the library. So I don't think we had that whenever I was in school, at least to this extent. So we'll move on to technology, Mr. Hippo.
Technology community is scheduled to meet also, and I think maybe I'm going to anger Bryce, but Bryce, I think we might want to move that. I know I had signed off on that early and I'll take responsibility, but just listen to tonight. We have C D R C that day, education that day, facilities that day. And we're going to be over burning a lot of folks, so maybe.
All right, we'll look at it after Dave.
Slide that away for something, please.
Okay.
That's my fault, Chris.
All right, we'll get something.
Well, yeah, we're not going to rush up or even C D R C or, there's four things going on. We cleared the calendar for it, but I didn't want to go a few days. So. What's that?
Bop, did it?
It is, it is. Bryce, if you have something, you'll make it work, I mean, I've got.
We can, we can switch the day.
Yes.
We can switch the day.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, sir. Onto our student representative, Miss Junia.
Okay, so athletics, our first home football game was this past Friday and we beat Hagerleesburg, thirty twenty nine. This coming Friday, we play away at Chingworth. Then the next home football game is the twentieth, we play Central Dolphins East. And that's also the elementary night where all the elementary football students and cheerleaders are invited to join the football team, play the pregame, the F L, which is called the Retribution Day. Then the following week is September twenty seventh, that's also a home game. And that's the Golden Garden night, which is where they recognize Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and the Brian Morton Foundation, they usually do a walk around the field during halftime. And then this Thursday for students, September nineteenth, we introduce all athletes that have a Sunday. Then also later that night is a volleyball game against Hagerleesburg. And that's where they honor the Eric Dalton Memorial Scholarship. And it's a great outfit volleyball, or volleyball game. Then within the school, the students have, all the students in seven through twelve, they've got their Chromebooks and could be introduced to all the new technology because every one of his Chromebooks is like half iPads, half Chromebooks. And we also just had the Rachel's Challenge Assembly. And so that was in the junior high and high school. And also gets introduced to the Rachel's Challenge. And then the Friends of Rachel Club was opened up, which is where they like spread positivity throughout the school. They wrote positive messages walking into the school with chalk. The progression of construction in the high school, a lot of students have noticed, like the updated classrooms in the second floor of the A building, there's new lighting, new ceilings in the cafeteria. All of the second floor A building classrooms are being, they've remodeled and they look really nice. This, or tomorrow actually, after school is auditions for the fall play, which is I believe the first week of November, that will be presented. By the end of this month, interims are released for, to the, out to the parents. And so that marks the halfway, the first part of the year. Then a community event is coming up, the Opportunities Fair, which is going to be in the high school fieldhouse. October first is a Tuesday, that's from six to eight. And parents and students are welcome to come to that along with people from different schools. Like if they want to come and like check out the Opportunities Fair, which is where a bunch of colleges come into the fieldhouse and they can just try to get information. And then October second, which is Wednesday, students will be able to go and walk through that during the day from nine to twelve. And then the last thing is, I'll probably have more information about this at the next meeting, but the homecoming is coming up. The dance is going to be October tenth, which is a Thursday. And then the game may announce October eleventh.
Thank you, ma'am. Since you mentioned the dances, and this is a topic we brought a few times over the years, how well are they attended in your eyes and is there anything different that we can do?
The homecoming dances usually like pretty packed, but it's, I know like, at least from what I heard, like everyone goes. Like all my friends and everyone that I talk to, everyone enjoys it. And it's like the only thing that I've heard, some students were like upset that we had, it was like moved to a Saturday and then it was moved back to a Thursday. And a lot of people were excited about it being on a Saturday. But yeah, that's like the only thing I've heard. It's usually really popular on this chrome, but yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I interject something? Just to piggyback off of what she was saying about the Chromebooks. Bryce, do you think we could put something out about the insurance? Remember last year, we had like a low turnout with signups for the insurance on the Chromebook? I don't know if we can get something maybe on social media and if Mrs. Mangan and Mr. Neely can make sure that they really try to get it out to the, to the parents? Because if your kids don't bring home that one slip of paper, then it sometimes gets missed. So I just want to make sure people know about it, so it's a lot less expensive to do now.
That's in the works. We kind of hesitate to send out a reminder on that until the devices are distributed and we get all of the serial number information to the insurance vendor. And that's done for the high school, junior high will be done this week, so.
Okay, okay, I just want to, just because we're not meeting next week for technology and that was one of our concerns last week. Thanks.
With the insurance, I know our reminder was just sent out like through the Skybird emails to all the students saying that insurance is available because I got one today. But I don't know if the parents are supposed to do that. And I don't know how many kids really.
I don't know, I didn't see it, but I haven't checked, have I?
I, I got one through my like Skybird, my school email. So I don't know if that's sent out to parents or what, but I know all the students received it.
Thank you, ladies. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to approval of minutes, motion for items A and B of the minutes.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go on a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Doesn't vote, motion carries. Move on to item number six, change orders, construction change orders. Do I have the motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Hippo, go on a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, comments or questions? And I believe these gentlemen would like to speak first, or would you like to just answer questions first? Are you? Go ahead.
Good evening, David Sparr, Vice President Reynolds. I think there was some good questions about stored material. I wanted to put some clarity around that. If I don't answer all the questions that I wasn't here to hear, we might be know afterwards. I think probably a good question that was asked was, why are we paying for stored material? Why do we, why is there stored material allowed in a construction project? The reason stored material is allowed in a construction project is it gives the contractors the ability to buy the material at the best price and give you the best price on bid day. If you constrain the contractors by either telling them when to buy the material or how to buy the material and then not letting them go for it, your price of your project will go up. Now, stored material doesn't apply to everything. We obviously don't store concrete, but there are lots of materials that do get stored. The provisions in the documents are in the general conditions, which are modified to the contract. Those general conditions allow us to store materials on site that can be built. We're really looking at materials across the contractor and they show you, here's what costs us to bolt peg. And that's for the material price only. And then later, when it's installed, then they get paid to install. You can also, and this is at the owner's option, when all sorts of conditions are met, like insurance and seeing it where it's stored, stored properly according to manufacturing instructions, et cetera, material can be stored offsite. That's less common, but there's provisions that allow the owner to do that under certain circumstances. Storing on site is nearly almost always a given. In Pennsylvania school construction, storing materials on site is, I've never seen a project where that wasn't allowed. What we don't want to do, and what happens with a lot of vendors is they want some big amount of money upfront before the materials even get shipped, just to place an order. If a vendor wants that through a prime contractor or subcontractor, that burden is on them. So if I'm a subcontractor and I'm buying material, I'm a prime contractor, I'm buying material, and the vendor says, you need to give me fifty percent before I'll start making that material, that subcontractor has to pay that fifty percent. They can't build the owner for it until it shows up somewhere. So another reason why we have to pay for stored materials is the subcontractor or the prime contractor is already out money in many cases before that material even shows up. And then they have to pay for it when it arrives. So it's basically allowing that cash flow and that to occur while allowing you to have the lowest cost you can have for your product. I think that's a really important question. That's provided for in your documents and that's provided for in every public school project that I've ever done. That's provided for in your documents, and that's provided for in every public school project that I've ever done. Because that's a fair way to do business, is to get the best price. Was there anything about stored material questions that I didn't answer that I traveled?
Yes. I asked what the contract that said, I have the right to go out and buy materials without our authorization. And what I got was a document that says, the owner may pay for off-site stored materials. And that, that was never brought to this board to do it or not to get. What's this, then?
That's the general condition. I don't know what that is.
This is what was provided to me as the contract.
That's, that's part of the general, general contract that comes after that. But this, I'd have to, this, what I just gave you.
I see that.
This is here.
But I was told, that was the contract, and that is what made it okay for this contractor to go out and buy materials without our permission.
A couple, a couple things make it okay. And this is what you have here. A couple things make it okay. When you enter into an agreement, and Mr. Beard, tell me why I'm wrong. When you enter into an agreement with these contractors, the first thing that happens is you put the notice on them to procure the material. After the school board says, five, four, go ahead, in our case, the contractors go out and they start to procure. The first thing they do is they get designs, shop drawings, cut sheets, or whatever that says, this is what I'm buying. When you voted that contract to go, you also gave the authority to the architect to say, when they get the list of materials and the information on the materials for the architect to say, this is correct, or you need to correct this, then you may go buy. That approval by the architect is what allows the contractor to go purchase. What, the function that the school board provides is that they approve the contract to go. So the school board, if, for all construction material in these construction contracts, unless it's a change, it, it stops with that vote to approve the contract to go. So that's where the authority was.
Okay, you're telling us this probably saved us money, but it's costing us sixty-seven thousand dollars to do this.
Let's talk about that a little bit, and, and I will, I can't fix that necessarily, but what I can do, as, as this finishes out, is I will work with the administration to find out what the remaining cash flow looks like before that happens again, and.
Yeah.
Well, if it could happen again, I don't know if we're gonna run into a, the problem another end of fiscal year. I assume this was at the end of fiscal year?
No, the, the approval of the plan that we made at the last meeting should not.
It won't happen, you won't have an issue again.
I, I believe you told them not to do it again. Oh, as far as the.
Please don't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, as far as.
I clarified a question. So, my understanding is, is that we're not going to have the volumes, the draws that we had to this point. It was in B goal this year. I thought the question involved financing compared to the existing draw schedule, so I, I guess.
Well, and, and that is what this surrounds. The, the financing schedule and how much money you're allowed to take over a certain period of time, and if there's a place in, in the project where we say, we can't take more money than this by this time. If there's no more place like that in the project, then there's nothing to worry about. If there was a place like that, unfortunately, I wasn't aware, but I would try to give it less attention. So, my apologies, because I just happened to make that, but I understand what you're asking. So, but stored materials are allowed, and that's, that's the reason why they are allowed.
What keeps, like, J.C. Orr from going out and spending ten million dollars and we have to pay him tomorrow?
On material?
Yeah. Because you're saying we're allowed, that they're allowed to do that to save money for them, or to keep the bid, or to save us money. So what prevents us now at this point, if one of the contractors, the HVAC, whoever, decides they're gonna go out and spend ten million dollars, 'cause they're gonna make more money at that, and we don't have the money to pay that? Because we would have to cash in bullies, and then we'd be done off.
Mostly what stops that is the fact that you can't bring all the materials to a construction site, store it there, and have room to build. So, there are some things that, that occurs with. Um, it, it occurs with, sometimes you'll get some HVAC units that show up, but for example, you don't pay for steel until it shows up. So, unless you have a really long lead time, and we're past this, where we wanted to fabricate the steel, the steel was in the yard, we went and saw it stored off-site, and we agreed to pay for it off-site, we, we don't run into those problems, because the drywall shows up, and within the month that it shows up, it's hung. So, really what does that? It's not a contractual thing, but it's a physical limitation of a construction site.
So you say unless we agree to it, so.
For off-site. For off-site storage.
We didn't have to agree to this two million dollars. We could've said, no, don't buy it.
For, for on-site, if it's stored on-site, you pay for it. If it's stored off-site, it says, materials stored off-site shall not be included. Payment for materials stored off-construction site shall subject to limited condition.
These materials.
Unless prior approval of the owner has been obtained.
See, I, I. It costs us money by what they get. I don't think that should cost us money.
Well, un- unfortunately, it wasn't just that that cost you money. There were all sorts of other things going on in that year where bills were, were occurring, and invoices were coming in, and apparently, we got up against what that limit was, and when that occurs, and you're in that last month, then you have to have some discussions with the contractors. Because any contractor, I, I have that part of my hand, but you have the ability to pay at different intervals, et cetera. And if I go to a man like Mr. Orr and say, can you wait two weeks for a payment so it doesn't cost the school district sixty-seven thousand dollars? He might tell me no, that he doesn't wanna do that, because he's not required to by contract, but I'll bet a man like that. And that's one of the ways you manage that, that situation.
But the two million dollars we're talking about is being stored off-site.
Okay.
Did I not just hear you say?
I, I, I'm not telling you where it's being stored. I'm saying.
Well, I thought you.
The owner has the, the ability to.
I thought you were.
I personally did not go look at it.
Who did that? Because, what's Dr. Free tell me?
There, it had to be verified. It came to us to, to.
Well, who did it? You said it was Damian.
I'm saying it was Reynolds.
Where's, where's the stored off-site?
Which, which, like, the lighting, I guess, like, you're talking about?
Two million dollars, Mark?
At the light.
It's, it's, okay.
So. And they provide photographs, proof of insurance. The materials fully marked for this project, so it doesn't.
That's, that's what's required by this. Sometimes you go see things, sometimes you go home and.
What says right in the here that you're supposed to. Someone is supposed to. And they will pay for that person to go there and, and look at it. And what happens if this contractor goes bankrupt?
You pay for the materials, you don't need materials. They're not stored at the contractors, they're not, apparently, they're not stored at the contractors site, they're stored at the vendor's site.
But we don't have where they're stored.
Yeah.
You said it was stored at the vendor's site.
Where it was, where it was.
Where the supplier is.
And what happens is, if you pick all the day, within two days, when you give the materials, like, if it wasn't purchased and stored yet, it would be available anytime. So they have the material their way, of course, as we requested.
They're sure.
Yes, ma'am.
We actually went there and looked at it.
I did not, but they provided the photographs, they provided the proof of insurance, a letter of ownership. There's certainly a requirement to stay up and fight it for them. And anytime you have one question, I mean, we would get it, we would have to go look at it.
This is wrong.
What did the contractor say altogether? How much did he save by that?
I have no idea.
So, if he could've saved less than what we, what, what was that?
Would the tariffs go in by now? That, that could change, you know, hard. That's only.
I was kind of curious who he said.
For most of what, it's a difficult question to answer, because the contractors buy it when it's most advantageous to them, so you have to know, okay, you know when they bought it, perhaps, but you have to know what they had to pay for it if they bought it at a different time. So, if they bought it just in time, like, if you're talking about drywall, you have to know what the price is at that time in the future, which, uh.
And they request price that you can.
March of the year.
So he brought it at a certain price, and so, when, when we really needed it, could maybe be in two months.
Yes.
So, if the price may go down in two months. I'm, I'm, just an hypothetical. You don't know.
Absolutely.
So, what, does he really say to us money, or did we lose money on him, on him being fruitful?
When you allow a contractor to buy things early in a project in this current economy, in the general, you have to reduce the cost of your project. Yes. I can't tell you by how much, because it depends on what it is.
But we'll, we'll know eventually how much he saved, correct?
You could, if you said, well, if you bought it here versus buying it here, it would save some money, yes. But at that point, once you sign a lump sum contract agreement, whatever he can save in buyout, how he procures his materials, it's his.
Is that commonplace for contractors that bid out a project like, like ours, to do that type of, of, uh, for your, for the bid?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that, would, did everybody that submitted a bid do that?
Everybody that submitted a bid, that's any kind of a contractor at all is doing something like that. Where it doesn't happen is with concrete, because you can't buy it if you need it. With by two minutes materials, which can fluctuate all over the place, especially if you have other things, and by two minutes materials go up, then, then sometimes you have contractors coming and saying, oh, I, I have this unreasonable circumstance, would you give me more money? In which case you say, sorry, well, some contract.
Yeah, that's involved in several building projects, and I never remember it was cutting out. Never, ever.
That's, it's, it's.
No, it did so much with the building that I.
I, I believe you. I've never seen a company talk about stored material before, right?
And I think I heard you say, if he saved money doing this, this is his savings.
Yes, I would say that.
Okay, so we didn't save any of that.
He took the risk when he bid. So when he bid it, he said, I am going to bid this number, believing that I can buy it at this time.
Right.
And so that was the risk he took when he put it in.
Right.
If he would've figured that he bought it just in time, then he would've had to put up a higher number and allow him to do that split.
Can he do that, if we have an agreed upon contract amount?
You have an agreed upon contract amount, he can buy it whenever he wants to buy, as long as he gets it here in time, and it's the right product.
But can he pass that increase on to us?
No.
Yeah, so.
Just like you can't have his savings, he can't pass it.
Exactly. So we can save a penny, and it cost us sixty-seven thousand dollars.
What you did was, on bid day, when they bid their best number, they were competitive with their, with their procurement process. That is where you save, in the competition among the contractor. That's where the, that's where you save your money. You don't save it at the end when.
When they're out buying.
When they're out buying, that's where you save.
So we're.
Because the other way, it's not your problem.
Exactly. But it cost us sixty-seven thousand dollars to save him money so he could make more money on us.
So he could charge less money on, on, yes.
But we don't know that.
So, I'd say it costs more, it's a, it's a saving, maybe, but.
Yeah, you don't know on bid day that he was hoping to get this purchase, so, but on bid day, you can't say it until he, like, the lowest cost.
So for example, on bid day, if he, you know, from his lighting vendor, and if he got an order in at a certain time, that he was gonna be at a certain rate, but prices were gonna go up. Let's say he ordered the lights in November, because prices were going up in January. Well, he bid, he bid it so that he could buy it before the end of the calendar year, so he avoided that price increase. When he did that, instead of buying it on time in March, he didn't pass, you, he never saw that price increase, and you never saw it either, in your bid.
But still, he gets the savings, we end up paying sixty-seven thousand dollars so he can save money.
That's true, but you ended up paying sixty-seven thousand dollars because of accumulation of a bunch of, in, of bills over a period of time. And if one, one bill happened, they come in and put it over, but it could've been that, other things were.
That's not the way it was explained to us. This is the bill that caused the overage, that caused us to have to spend sixty-seven thousand dollars.
I understand that, but that's blaming the last straw of the project.
And this project is not ahead. We were also told the project was so far ahead, and that's why we have to pay this money. Well, it's not that far ahead.
Okay. Part of that conversation.
Well, it's not, and, you know, we're ending up having to pay sixty-seven thousand dollars, and he was possibly, he possibly purchased it so he could actually more money. Yes. And that's what I have a problem with.
But you say it's clearly legal. It's in the climate, it's legal. Yep.
So let me understand this, if, if, just try to summarize it. Um, on bid day, they did this amount, whatever, however many dollars, there it is. And that's the number that they're sticking to, regardless of what deals they get along the line, whether it's high or low, they could end up paying more for materials than they expected on bid day. But they agreed to a number, we agreed to that number, and that's where we move forward, right?
That's right.
Okay, and just jumping back to bid day, maybe my memory is wrong here, but I believe you guys mentioned at some point in time, um, in regard to the timing where we were able to award the bids, the cost of steel went up such that it was something like a million dollars of the difference of where it would've been had we have heard it previously. So we're paying a million dollars more because of the approval date for that.
Not getting into approval dates, I will tell you this. I'd like to tell you this with actors. Before the tariffs occurred, from all the information that we had on the cost of steel from our vendors, so we, we don't just think of these things, you know, that sounds good. We checked it with several vendors, okay? The cost of the steel on this project before the tariffs and after changed by about a million dollars for the structural steel.
Okay, I see. A second.
Is this dude from China?
No, there's a law that prohibits that.
And where are the tariffs coming from?
The tariffs come from the fact that when there is a tariff put on foreign product, it comes into the private market, not the Pennsylvania public market, the private market. All of a sudden, all of the US steel producers, of which my college roommate is in the business, it's a boon for them.
They just raise their prices.
They just raise their prices.
Some in other words, a tariff is.
Supply and demand. Tariff creates, creates a, a supply issue. The supply issue with steady demand creates a higher price.
So the people are paying for those tariffs?
In this case, the people who are out there who are paying for that tariff.
Good job.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Damian, uh, you and I have been doing this a long time, and I really don't know, you're vice president, how long you been in this game?
Since nineteen ninety-two.
Alright, so, let's, for everybody here, you would agree that probably every ten years, uh, the AIA documents are redone in some fashion in a ten-year cycle?
Oh, I agree.
Eighty-seven, ninety-seven, two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen.
The AIA documents are the contracts that we use for these contracts. The AIA is American Institute of Architects, and that's, that's these documents that are widely used, not completely everywhere, but widely applied to school.
And would you agree that the, uh, portion of the AIA that allows contractors to bid and secure the materials has basically remained unchanged for thirty-plus years?
I would.
And do you?
In my time, yes.
And would you agree that during your time as a construction manager in a company, and I, I don't know, you guys do tons and tons of work, I mean, you're all over the state. Have you ever seen anybody come in and try to say to a contractor that they could not purchase their materials anytime when that bid was in order?
No. I've had them say, you have to purchase and buy at time to meet a schedule deadline. But as long as they were available, as I said, they have to be the right materials, available when you need to install. That's, that's, that's the only limitation. There is a limitation, and if you buy early, you get the savings. That whole thing is called buyout. So contractors provide a bid, they give back to their subcontractors, and they work, they finalize their numbers, and when they save money there, they keep the money, and that's called buyout, and that happens on every project with subcontractors.
Have you ever had any attorney or school solicitor, either a school setting, a prison setting, a city setting, a county setting, ever tried to put restrictions to say that a contractor cannot purchase the materials ahead of time, in the long-term years?
No.
So I have a problem with them purchasing this stuff, but we shouldn't have to pay for it until we install it, and that's how I see it. You can buy all you want when you earn money, but once you install it into our property, then we should break the check down. So that's where I have a big problem.
Well, and, and I understand, how, how, how do you feel about that? Well, and I understand, how, how, how do you feel about that? Contract language, standard language is not that, that way. So, but I get what you're saying. And a lot of times, there are materials, there are materials that I don't worry about having if they're short lead time. So don't, I don't care what you buy, but don't bother with it. When you're dealing with equipment, lighting, things like that, that it takes weeks to get.
So that's another part that we don't know, I mean.
Right.
You know, I think, I mean, you're loads by light, well, no, when you're buying all these lights, it takes.
And when you're buying the things that are specially prescribed for our project is specified. And it's not that they're overwhelmingly special, but equipment, lighting, things like that take weeks and months. So I know that that's really important, and I want to do anything I can help to avoid those things. And I will do the best I can to find ways to avoid costs, you know, reach and buy money back. I agree with your frustration, Mrs. Bream, but this is the way school projects run, nine and a half to five and a half.
So essentially, we just have to communicate better and make sure this doesn't happen again?
Well, I think that the condition for it happening again has been removed because there is no point where you can't, you can't overspend as bottom line. And I think that's what I understood with Mrs. Bream.
Thanks.
Again, this tariff was passed on to the taxpayers and the people who are out there.
The tariff has to protect the steel.
Yeah, right.
That's, that's the issue. I'm sorry, I interrupted change orders, I, I need to do that, but I know this was important. Thank you for indulging.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
All right.
You probably don't notice off top of your head, are we at two hundred thousand yet on, on suitable soils? Does anyone know that?
No, we're not, because these two are actually been pre-approved by, by the board and by the committee. This is still working off of what we've already had. I would say we're about a hundred fifty thousand. I don't have that number, but off the top of my head, it's.
We're at about ninety thousand on a counter request to change orders, does that seem right?
Yeah.
So just two other questions, and this really has to do with change order, but I guess it's with you guys. Will we do an air quality test on the school? Being that it's between two main corridors with traffic all the time, is there going to be an air quality test or even a noise test? Noise pollution test for the, the students and the faculty?
I don't think that one is prescribed right now, but we could. So we can talk about it now or we can talk afterwards, but if, if we can understand what, what your concern is, then we can look at that. If you're talking about off gassing materials when the school opens, or something like that, there's, is that a air quality testing?
No, I'm just talking, the amount of traffic that goes through there and now we have it locked in.
Oh, or you're talking about the bridge?
Well, both sides of the school.
Okay, you're worried about, you're worried about probably oxide coming in. It's a discussion we can have, yes. Yeah, I, I would, I would make a note about that as we talk about that. I understand, thank you. A final item for the, for the catwalk brace.
I don't have a question.
I think it's like under stabilization catwalk. To be honest with you, it's, what I've seen is three or four eight foot braces that have to be attached, that have to be attached between the, between the rafters and the base of the catwalk to keep them straight.
Yeah, the problem was, there's the after lighting, the nation above that catwalk, so we had to move them out there. They, I left the, the category for a certain amount of sway, so like way a little more than what they had planned on. And that would have an impact on where the lights are and how the project is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been asking for it.
Where's the location of the unsuitable soils that are on here? Just because I thought we were like homeless, Doug.
I thought we were. These were primarily driven by the plumber, as he, as he's been digging and doing, putting in the in-ground work, putting in storm sewers, et cetera, putting in different plum, plumbing in the base of the building.
Okay, one of, well, both of them are area E two, which is the front corner, which is the E two, that's the E two area. Okay, right now, we're putting in the storm lines, the stormwater. We're probably eighty percent, eighty-five percent that we've got the storm chambers, that we've got storm chambers in place and decided in the system. And we still have a few bridges, we have a more than equal right now, which is really transformers and so on and so forth. So we are almost out of that one right here, just standing. I think there are probably a couple out there in the jury that are still, but we're at that.
Can I just come up with another question? What, these allowances at the bottom, MC allowance, CC allowance? How much do we have in that, in those that we can use?
I'll have to get those numbers through Dr. and he can pass those on.
Which is like EC stands for electrical or?
Yes. So in, in the, in the contract documents, if you, when you're in the trailer and you want to look at those, there's a section called unit prices and allowances. What, what Pennsylvania law allows is every time you have a unit price, let's say, I could just solve one for like copper pipe. So two and a half inch copper pipe, you know, installed, that, we will say how much per linear foot insulated? And they'll give us a unit price cost per, per foot. And we will say in the contract, we want you to include two hundred linear feet of this. Then the contractor takes their unit price times the two hundred linear feet, and that's what the allowance amount is.
So they give you, not for free, but gives you a percentage?
It's a set, it's a set aside amount that you own in the contract that you use when those issues come up. Because we know there's going to be variances in the construction.
So under a perfect condition, you'd never use them, that'd be money back to us?
Yes, if it was a perfect, absolutely perfect situation, it would be money back. When you get to the end of your allowances and you're not going to use them, or one line item of the allowances isn't going to be used, you take credit for that and use it against other change orders.
That was discussed previously, I remember. You thought that the five dollars pocketed the money that wasn't used?
No, that's ours.
Several months ago, we discussed that, but that's, that's part of the five dollar amount.
There's a certain figure for each, and if that runs out, then you have to do a change order.
That's right, yes.
And if you're under that. And you guys are stingy with that.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
Until the end, okay?
When it's real, it's nice to use it. If it's not real, it's the same as any other change order claim that's focused without.
And actually, the brief description of allowances is status for unidentified or unreported issues where you couldn't not fully know what was there, it's been wrong. It is set aside, so whenever you get into it and you can actually look at things, once you clear the stuff out, then that's where the allowances are for. There's going to be some things out there.
So like, this is just a crazy example, but unsuitable soils. If there had been a, an allowance for that, that's the kind of stuff you're talking about, you run into it, you don't know it, you can use it for that?
Yes. Yeah.
Right, is that it? Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so for the construction change orders, motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mrs. Bream, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Francis, and Mr. Johnston. Motion carries. Consent agenda, do I have any questions, please?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo. Item A, list payments, countless questions?
I have a few questions.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Check number one one zero eight five six. I'm just wondering how a two thousand nineteen vehicle needs two hundred seventy-one dollars for door.
I don't, I don't know, I'll talk to my head, but I can pull you a question.
What's our order? One one zero eight five six. There's a couple here for Gazette printers, one 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 two seven and one one zero seven thirty. Like, we use the Votek right now, that's just too much for them. I mean, we gave them ninety two hundred dollars, I don't know if we could use the Votek or stuff like that.
We do use the Votek when we have the opportunity, but those orders were placed prior to the Votek being back in session.
Check one ten nine eighty-nine Crown Castle fiber, is that for that fiber issue we had or something?
That's our monthly.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, that's.
Don't we have an issue that was some fiber line we got through?
Well, there's a fiber.
Special ed. That's what you're talking about.
That's not that.
Yeah, this is just the monthly recurring.
Okay. That's all I have.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, item A, financial reports?
I just, I have a request on the credit card expenses for Amazon. There's an expenditure for eight thousand twenty-four dollars and twelve cents. It just says payment for district wide Amazon. I think we should get a little bit more detail when it's that significant amount of money. I just requested that.
This is great, that's not just home purchase, those are purchase orders that go out for much different purchasing groups.
Right, that's my point.
Yep. So we can, I can send you a breakdown of that.
Any others? Okay, item C, tax assessment appeals. And D, I'm sorry, go.
Tax assessment appeals.
That would be item C under consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not the one, that's not the one. I have a question on that one.
Item D, optional football standby request, great. E, afterglow entertainment. F, AEDYWPK agreements. G, Blair Family Solutions contract. H, mentors. I, step-by-step learning agreement. J, home run against drugs program. K, volunteers. L, first training, courtesy review. M, repository.
That's my question. It has a market value of a hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars, and the bid amount was two hundred and fifty dollars. Is that covered correct? A hundred and twenty-four two?
It is, actually, according to the tax rules, I pulled that paperwork because I had the same question. If you look at the photos, I think the market value, based on the reassessment, was incorrect. I mean, it probably looks like it's all the way on itself. So I think the assessment value is incorrect, which is what's reported there, the one twenty-four five. The last purchase was actually at three five thousand dollars, there and around, about eight, nine years ago.
Okay, because it just seemed like that figure was way too high to be selling it for two hundred and fifty dollars.
I would agree with Mrs. Bream, I felt like I missed out on the buy at night, if you know like that.
Oh, and I thought there was, I thought there was a typo that somebody threw an extra one in there.
No, I looked at it too and said, wow, somebody missed that one, big deal, but pictures say otherwise.
You got a flip house? I have bought, I have got.
All right, item N, Chase Club meeting at the high school?
Is that exactly, because I read they all throw it, and it looks like they need one to two times a month for this exercise. Wouldn't they be needing more often for that?
Do you want to cover that, Brad or Mr. Neely or Chucker?
The question is about the Chase Club, the Chase Club that we're starting? The, one to two a month is more organizational. The idea is that they're monitoring their progress through, you know, their, their, their exercise routine. It was brought to me through members of our PE staff, and they wanted to get started, so I said, sure, sounds like a good idea. So they'll be exercising more than one to two days.
Okay, and.
Because that wouldn't get you anything.
The purpose of the club is so they can get together and exercise?
Either, either get together or compare. They're part of the, like, Mr. McGinnis, who probably spoke at the Cal the other day. You know, they're creating their own fitness plans, they're monitoring their own, how they're doing, so it's more or less a time to get together. They may exercise, they may review each other's plans, they may review, see how they're doing. So, but yes, you're right, I mean, that would not really be a huge benefit to only exercise.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item O, secondary conference request. Item P, secondary field trips. Item Q, parking truck. R, ignited agreement. I'm sorry, did you have something? Sorry, your light is on. Ignited agreement, item S, open campus proposal for ingenuity services. All right, so is there anything anybody wants to pull? All those in favor, consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, ESPN slave candidates. Do I have a motion, please?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Johnston, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item P, capital reserve list payments, motion.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, countless questions? Okay, can I roll call in someplace?
Mrs. Bream? No. Mr. Sigler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis? Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Urban Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
I'm also a no on the tennis courts.
Mr. Cruz?
I'm a no on the tennis courts.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, ma'am.
May I have a question about that tomorrow?
I guess I just have a question about legality. We passed to do the Penn Lincoln roof, and it's a nine to zero vote. And then people are voting enhanced paying for it, like at the last meeting, it was a five to four vote for the bill on the Penn Lincoln roof. And tonight, it's an eight to one. I mean, can we vote to not pay for something that we voted to do?
Well, it was five, four.
Yes, it was. I, it's in the minutes. I just re-looked it up. So last, last meeting on eight nineteen, the Penn Lincoln roof, we were paying two hundred and fifty-five thousand, thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents, and it was a five to four vote. Nobody removed themselves from anything. I was surprised too. So I, I, I just want to know, I mean, aren't we held accountable when we pass something to pay for it?
Yes.
So what happens if we vote not to pay for it, then what, where does it go from there?
Well, if you have an agreement with the contractor, you will go to the terms of that contract, and you would see what are penalties, but if you agree to fix a roof at two hundred fifty-five, and I believe like a hundred something thousand is going to be paid through insurance.
Well, the total is four hundred and eighteen thousand.
Either way.
It's just the portion of the last month.
But once you enter into the agreement and they will see you have enforced the contract at every miller line, so they'll just take it fast and you'll end up paying it along the way, so getting out of it.
Thank you for that question, Gally, I have the same question. If we approved of something and we voted whatever the vote was to approve it, and we have people voting no to make payments on it, aren't we then in breach of the contract that we signed with the contractor? And wouldn't they have recourse to come back and actually get more money plus penalties out of us for not making payments on the agreement we made?
Each contract depends on each contract and what exposure is.
Isn't this why you move some of the things for information and leave off the great company?
Yes.
Okay. So that could have been moved to information only? Or is that because there's still payments on it?
The board needs to vote, make these payments.
I thought you moved things to information only because it was a finished contract and once it's signed contract, it doesn't yet.
My understanding, there are things that can be for information only and there are other things the board needs to vote on. So, Cam did move some things.
Yes, yes, okay.
But, that said, I've never seen a, a capital reserve list to the payments not be voted one by four. I wanted to chair, part of this for about nine, nine years, three years in school districts, but I would believe that the board would want to, want to vote on those things.
I guess where my concern is that, I'm, if you're, it's already been noted publicly that you voted against the school. So why are we still continuing to vote against paying for our invoices that are coming in? I mean, everybody knows that you're opposed to the school, I don't understand why you wouldn't approve the payments.
So I, so I said I was going to vote anything to do with the new school. That's what I'm doing, I'm, I'm moving my work on everything, I'm voting no to the new school, that's what, that's what I said.
Okay, so, I guess, that's why I'm so frustrated that everybody walked out tonight when PSBA is here, because they're going over their policies and, and what we do collectively as a group. And there are certain things that we're, we're to do and it says, um, what, what does it mean when we're told that all board members should support decisions of the board even when they disagree? And it doesn't mean that you have to be a cheerleader or that you have to support, for instance, in this case, the new school. But it does mean that once the vote has been taken, school directors should accept that the time for the debate on the issue is over and that it is time to move forward constructively. Once the course of the action has been decided, all members of the board are expected to work together to find the best way to implement it. It can be damaging to students, the district, and the community if at every step along the way, the focus is diverted from the best way to move forward by continued snipping and rehashing of the original decision or attempts to throw new roadblocks in the way. So I guess, my thought is that we voted on this five to four and we need to move forward collectively as a board to make the best decisions. We're not going back and revoting on the new school. So I think that it's time to come together and start making the best decisions as a collective group, that's what we're, we're doing. You, you've already been noted that you publicly, it, it's already been recorded that you voted against it and people know that. So why, why can't we move together? No, I'm talking, I'm just, no, I'm just, that's why, that's why I voted for PSBA to come in, because I don't think that sometimes we, we understand our rule. And one of the things that they suggest is, another point that they say is, what should we do when a board is not working as a team? And it, it says, open communication is critical to the proper functioning of your board. Um, and it goes on to say, at, at, at the end, and I, I can, you know, copy and paste it for you, but PSBA can help with a custom workshop tailored to your board's specific situation. And so that's why I voted for PSBA to come in and I, I think it's irresponsible that members got up and left tonight.
Well, the thing with the, with the PSBA, yeah, that was, that was.
Certification.
But, but I think every board member has, has a right to, yeah, I would like to vote that one, but we're voting that one, I think that's our, that's our right to do with board members. Like you said, the school's passive, nothing we can do about that, but we can still vote no on that. I think as far as any educational programs ready for the kids, we're all municipal. And that, but it's just with the school issue and, by the way, with PSBA, there, there's so much snipping on this board, so much dislike between board members. Uh, that's not going to go away, no matter who you bring in. So, uh, you know, it's just, it's just personal dislike from board member to board member. And personally, I'm going to go keep voting no on, thinking there's a new school. And I said that publicly, I'm going to keep saying it.
Okay, but what about the last meeting when we voted against the Penn Lincoln roof?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry I did that, it was a rule I had to put in.
Okay, because I, I was surprised.
I'd like to see a tape on that, I, I'd find that very familiar.
We can go back to another vote we took when there were problems with the aid building. And because it was part of the new project, people voted no on it, but it was for the aid building.
That's.
And it was an existing problem. Uh, I, the only thing I want to say is, Kelly said exactly what I've been saying for a while, which, are the members who are voting no on this, if this would ever come to fruition, are they putting the district at a financial risk for being sued for not fulfilling a contract? And, by the way, let me also echo her point. When you have sitting board members get up and walk out, and walk out. Dave, you didn't walk out and there's a reason you didn't walk out either. People walk out because they refuse to even hear something. That, in my opinion, does nothing to build any confidence in this board as a body. And two of the people that walked out were getting awards for their service on the board, which is hilarious. They're supposed to be leaders and instead they get up and walk out and act like children who don't want to hear what the rules are and what somebody else. I agree with you, Kelly, I said the same thing. We need people to come in and tell us what our rules and responsibilities are. And if someone says, I already know the rules and responsibilities, well then sit in the chair and listen to the presentation like an adult. Not sad.
No, I, I'm just, yeah, they, I'm, I'm just saying that the four of us have a right to vote the way they want.
Absolutely.
And the, and the three that walked out, whether I agree with it or not.
Do you agree?
They have, they have every.
Do you agree with it?
Personally, I have my own opinion on it, I told them what I thought about it, but I won't say it publicly.
So wait a minute, when did you guys talk about that?
Wait, Dave, that's the floor currently.
I talked dead about it.
So it was organized?
No, it wasn't, that wasn't organized.
Brad knew.
So anyway, I just, I just think they had a right to vote. But we, there, there's just so much dislike in this board, that's what it is. You know, I've sat on a lot of boards and I've never, ever been around board members that can't stand one another. In fact, you, you couldn't have nine of us get out to dinner together. In fact, most of us wouldn't want to go together.
That's because we break a rule.
So.
I'd go out to dinner with you any day, Dave.
But no, but I'm just saying, that's not you and I, I'm saying other board members. You know, I'm just saying that, you know, everyone has a right to do what they want to do, whether I agree with it or not, but that's what, that's what they live, have a right to vote the way they want.
Sounds good.
I, I guess my complete surprise was the last meeting where everyone voted against paying for the roof and I should have said something at the time and I didn't. But I, I guess when it came up again tonight, I thought maybe it was the time to say something.
No, I just thought that, I'm surprised that, because I always voted against it on the capital reserve that, that we're not new school.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item C, performance and exercise equipment, have a motion please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions?
Uh, yes, I'm, are we, are buying this or is there a donor for this? We've talked about this a few times before.
On behalf of the foundation board, I can assure you that we're committed to seeing the project through.
Any other comments or questions? Can I have a roll call in this place?
Mr. Sandler?
Yes.
Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Urban Adams?
Yes, and thank you to the foundation.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes, thank you to the foundation, thanks, Miss Warner, for making that possible.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes ma'am.
He has us.
There you go.
All right, item D, district administrative office renovations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions?
Was this, was this put out for bid advertising?
That's what this is, voting to put it out for.
I mean, was your, it put out for bid?
The architect was elected prior.
It wasn't put out for bid.
That was done a year ago.
I just asked, yes or no, was it put out for bid?
Keep that.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
Going into the service.
Okay.
Okay. No.
Any other questions? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Francis? Mr. Hippo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Mrs. Urban Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Cruz?
No.
Mrs. Green?
No.
Mr. Sandler?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Five to four, passes.
Item E, personnel, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second. Thank you, Mr. Hippo, comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. My dad, um, we got a change of today, so that, I don't know if I'm going to use the name, but anyhow, she has to be the certification. If she didn't beat them, she loses her job.
This is standard to, to ensure that they get the certifications to retain their position.
So if they didn't, they, they would have.
We would have the right to discuss that.
And this is like the basketball coach we hired, he has to get certifications also.
Okay.
Two of them or something?
All right. Oh, he has to go along.
And do we know if he already enrolled? Can, I mean, do we get information that he enrolled in that and that?
He will be enrolled.
So it's same type setup?
Same setup.
Yes, it's a staff.
Is that a person? Does it get a lot of? Yes.
What happened?
Brad?
Yes, sir.
We explicitly went over this with the cut, is correct?
Correct, with all hires that are higher in emergency contingency, um, they accept the position, understanding that they have a requirement within X number of years to obtain the appropriate certification to fill the requirements of the position. The position you're referring to, that, that teacher had, is already certified in social studies, has to get a proper education certification to allow him to teach the career courses in addition to the, uh, the co-op four year, or school degree program. Yes, essentially, you can be emergency certified for two years and then two additional years in program. So if you allow four total years to complete under emergency cer- certificate, if you doesn't serve it enough, you don't have to apply for emergency certificate. That's the cost of any, on any emergency.
Okay, so, just a quick question, another good this out of the main counter, can you fill and help to break up?
Sure.
All right, any other comments or questions on personnel?
I have just a general question, someone else speak?
No, I just say ahead.
Okay. Um, on the, um, cyber academy, and it's really not anything to do with what's here, but how many people do we have in our secondary and how many in our elementary cyber academy? Does anyone know?
Sure. So already your secondary enrollment was over fifty at the high school and growing, and over between twenty and twenty-four at junior high school. Um, we anticipate having a hundred in the time.
And then what about elementary?
Oh, and?
We have five students enrolled currently, uh, and we are able to cover our costs. We got three this week, so I'm, I'm anticipating that that will go up as well.
The five will go up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? All those in favor on personnel, item E? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries? Item F, board member conference. Need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, go have a second.
He's not going to be able to make that.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'm, sorry about that.
Okay, that just came to us today.
Okay, so can you remove your motion then?
I removed mine.
Thank you. Just trying to do a credit. Did you write there? Is that close?
Well, actually, yeah, you're good.
Okay. All right, so we have, um, for information only items, anybody have any comments or questions about those? Thing nine, um, employee union's response. Middle management. And solicitor.
Newsletter went out, uh, another one on school safety and security is coming out. We've already met, uh, with, uh, Chief Pepper and his group, uh, last week to deal with new Act sixty, sixty-seven requirements. It's been put a lot of kinks in a lot of school districts. I heard there's some efforts that are a little current in Blair County to try to get some training in here because it's really, to get ahead on this all, if they pass this legislation, that will all be addressed in the newsletter and there's still time for anybody to register. They still want to go to, um, the seminar at the school study council on September twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Information, I think lots of facility committee meeting from April.
We, we reviewed, we were going through other documentation and we're like, hey, what, we just never put on the board agenda. So we finally put in for information only, it got missed because of the scheduling.
It's possible.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, I'm. I will be sending out the newsletter tomorrow, it came from you probably after, I already sent out a report update. All right, uh, motion to adjourn?
I was.
Too bad.
I was very good.
I was invited up to a, by superintendent to their school and they have a banner on the wall of all the alumni who were in the service. And this started at nineteen thirty up to present, World War I, World War II, Korea. And they had Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, Coast Guard, and then all their names and there was a star missing in action, uh, two stars killed in action. I think it's a great idea for alternate, get involved in this, I, I personally would like to be involved in this also. Another superintendent at their school, when a kid graduates, they give them a hundred dollars when they join the military. Fantastic, you know, the incentive. But I liked how they had the wall of all the alum, has to be the alumni from the school district. And they had World War II uniforms in there and this was in their library. They had scrapbooks in there, like even women, clippings from the, um, newspaper back in the day. And, uh, it's just a, a nice idea and, you know, kind of give back to the veterans. So, you know, perhaps we can get the history class involved, the students involved and, um, you know, some more managers.
That's true, that's, that works with the district.
Eight, uh, graduating, quite graduated about three hundred students.
So it's a, it's desperate. In the years in the draft, this could be extensive. Up to nineteen seventy-two, where anyone over the age of eighteen was drafted into service, we could be looking at eight hundred million per year, maybe more.
And you said the school gave each kid a hundred dollars?
Superintendent.
A school gave each kid a hundred dollars when they joined the.
The school did that?
The school or superintendent? It was a foundation.
Yeah.
The foundation, uh, also it was the, uh, DFW and American Legion. They actually did that because when they go off to boot camp, they don't really have a whole lot to make when they might not have anything. It was just, thank you for your service, uh, that, that heard out in, uh, Spring Cove. One Mr. Johnston's talking about, it's up in central Cambria. I believe that's the one, one, he wants to see that one.
If it's doable, I know it's a lot of work. It's not like it's going to be a month, I mean, it may take years.
Tell them that they started this World War what?
Nineteen thirty. If it's too much, it was nice when they had it laid out, you know, they, you know, the names, you know, so, so when they had a sporting, so when they had a sporting event, you know, they put a name on there, that's my dad's name on there. You know, that's my, my son, he was in Afghanistan, his name's. It was touching and that was nice, I was invited up there to see that. And he had a, you know, a, award ceremony, you know, they had a hundred people up there, you know, you know, the dedication on it, it's something to ponder on.
Something to ponder on.
I'd rather see it, especially if I have to, or to see it very, but I, I service, just that, but I don't think most guys, it's my, I know, I don't, I don't care if my names are the black, Indian, you know, that's, that doesn't matter to me. I don't, I don't want my name, I don't need it. Ones and heathens or MIAs or one, it doesn't matter.
I like it.
That's, that's even more touching.
All right, motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned? No move.